Five thirty and the Planning, Zoning Commission meeting for our October eighteenth, twenty sixteen will now come to order. We'll have our invocation and then our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh Father God, we're before you this day in the beauty of the day and together as we conduct the business of our city, we give you thanks for our city, for all those who serve our city, for those of us who live in our city, and that we may always be doing what is in the best interest of the city and what is in the best interest of the kingdom. We give you all the praise, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Please take the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our first item is approval of minutes from the last meeting. Do we have any corrections, any additions? There being no corrections or additions, do we have a...
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as read?
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are now approved. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning, Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from the consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. We do have two items on the consent agenda. There being no reason to move those, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval?
Do we read them? Do we not read them?
Second.
It's been moved and second that the items on the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda stands approved. Now we'll move to our regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be open, and testimony will be heard in the following order: the applicant, staff, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the request. If you're a part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which be conducted by the City Council on November tenth, twenty sixteen. Okay. Can we have the first item on the regular agenda, please?
Yes. Consider application P sixteen dash thirteen Alpine Meadows Phase Two filed by Richard Henson to plat approximately fourteen point four-four acres of abstract three sixty Alexander Jordan survey into forty-four residential lots located east of Alpine Road along Boston Drive.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward and give us your name, address, and tell us what you're doing, please, sir.
My name's Richard Henson, reside in Gilmer, Texas. And basically put in a, connected a Boston Drive with Boston Drive, finishing Phase Two of what was started as Alpine Meadows subdivision by a previous developer. Picked it up and started Phase Two of hopefully a total of four phases for the subdivision. All lots comply with current zoning regulations and we'd like to have it approved so we can build some affordable housing for the community.
All right, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. There being none, we'll hear from staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As stated previously, this will be a forty-four lot subdivision extending Alpine Meadows Phase One. This will be Phase Two, extending Boston Drive, and there'll be Sophia and Maggie Lane. Those are two new streets. The plat does comply with City of Longview requirements, and staff did receive a letter of credit. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
What size? What are we bringing in?
It's already zoned SF four.
SF four?
So it will comply, complies with SF four requirements.
And four is what?
Minimum seven thousand five hundred square foot lots.
And structure?
Minimum one thousand, but that's city minimums. I'm not sure with the developers.
Our minimums could be fifteen hundred square feet, mostly exhibition rent property.
Okay. Further questions for staff? Okay. There being none at this time, we will open up the public hearing on application P sixteen dash one-three. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Name and address, please, sir.
I'm Steve Pertle. I live at six oh two Regency, Longview. I am, I've got a question on this. We have an issue with the fellow in question here about a piece of property that I'm having to look at right now on council. He has not taken care of what we are addressing on that, and I've got a concern that we may have some of the same issues when we come into this subdivision part here. He has been hard to get a hold of, and at this point, Michael Shirley has been dealing with him, and I'm pretty sure it's going to come down to me before it's all said and done, so.
What property is this?
It's the corner of McCann and Fairmont.
That's not me.
That's a partner of yours or your brother, right?
That is my brother, and he's completely separate.
Okay. Are they separate, or that's not what we've been told?
I don't know. I mean, I think Mr. Henson is right. He said he sold it to our...
I sold the lot to my brother, and then he developed it. I had nothing to do with it.
Well, that's...
I'm not happy with that.
Okay. Well, you know, we need to get something done on that, and I'm scared that that may happen on this subdivision too. And if that happens, that's going to throw, that's going to throw Kristin Shahar into this situation.
It applies to city...
Yeah.
And so, and so did that corner piece of property too. But, you know, it's not draining, right? And we're flooding out the neighbor next door. So I do have some concerns with this guy's development, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and I think your comments were in opposition...
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? There being none present, the public hearing on application P sixteen dash thirteen is now closed. Do we have discussion? Commission?
I have a question about the prior comments. Who is the brother and what is the location of this other property?
It's a, what he's talking about is a fourplex rental property at the corner of Fairmont and McCann. I owned the lot and sold it to my brother. And the city engineer at the time wasn't really a licensed engineer, and so there's been some drainage issues. We've sent an engineer out. I say we, I sent an engineer out because my brother wouldn't. And so, we, Michael Shirley and I have been working on this, trying to get it resolved. Basically, there was a berm built where there should have been a valley, and that's all it amounts to, and it's backing water up onto the property next door. But once again, that's not me.
The property north or the property west?
That has nothing to do with the subdivision or nothing to do with me.
Thank you.
Are there additional partners in this subdivision?
There are. The partners are my father and a couple of guys from Gilmer. They're actually the owners. I just developed it for them.
Is your brother involved?
No, not at all. And this not only complies with everything, City of Longview regulations and zoning, but we also, the partners have put up a letter of credit to the city saying that everything will comply, and if it doesn't, then they, the city will collect on that letter of credit from the bank and make sure that things can take place.
That is correct. There is a, there's a few outstanding, small, minor details that are still outstanding for this project, but he has provided us a letter of credit so that if something were to ever happen, the city would go and install all that outstanding, whether it's infrastructure or, you know, small items, the city would install, cash that letter of credit. That is correct.
The utilities and streets are...
Yes. The utilities and the streets are already in.
Yes, that was going to be my question also. Did you do that, or is that the prior developer that installed the streets?
No, we did that.
You did that.
Brand-new streets with concrete curb and gutter and utilities, and they've all met the approval of the city.
Do you look like you put sidewalks in also?
No, sir.
No?
Okay.
No, those are setback lines.
Setback lines?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Question for staff. Were you aware that there was some concern or some...
I think there's...
...confusion about an existing, I mean, were you all aware of this, or...
Yes. Staff is aware of, there's a drainage issue at that corner, and I believe Michael Shirley, the director, has been working with his brother. I believe he's been working with his brother, but they are, staff is aware of that intersection and the drainage.
Okay. My point is, is that based on the issue that's been raised here today, were you aware that this applicant had nothing or had no involvement with the other, or, I mean...
Well, and this is two different projects, and so we look at it, you know, this is a different project from the other one. Now, if it was, you know, somehow tied in, you know, but this, it is a different, it is a different project. Yes. Did I answer your question?
So, what, what staff knowledge about this applicant in relation to the other project? Do you have any?
I have not been dealing with that intersection. Michael Shirley has the director, and I believe that, I think he does know, I think Mr. Henson actually did inform him that it was his brother that owned the property at Fairmont and McCann.
Okay. But nothing in the application, nothing in any of your research, nothing in anything you've seen with the letter of credit or anything, you didn't see anyone other than this applicant?
That's correct.
Are there other questions? Commission? You may be seated.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of commission at this time on the application?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll entertain for the...
I'm not against the subdivision going in. I just want to make him aware that we are having issues with another piece of property that he was involved with at some point or time, and that me and Mr. Shirley have been working, trying to get this issue resolved, and we have had a hard time getting it resolved, whether it be through him or his brother. Now, I'm definitely not opposed to the, through the subdivision. I want that to happen. We need that growth here. But, you know, once burned, you get back and look at something a little bit harder the next time. Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure exactly where I am here. I have a motion and a second.
So clear the record. I may speak.
If you just wait just a minute for me, Mr. Henson, I'm trying to help you. Okay. I'm not sure exactly where I am here. I have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion on the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do, do we have other questions from the commission at this point in relation to this discussion, other than...
I come back to the staff, and I don't like a few things. I want to know specifically what is not in compliance.
There was a punch list. There were minor issues, I can't remember, I'm sorry, off the top of my head. I think there were some, a little bit of grading, but that letter of credit, which was for about thirty-six thousand dollars, will take care of it. If Mr. Henson and his contractors do not follow through with that punch list, that our inspectors, as well as our city engineer, are, you know, they actually go out there and inspect the site. If he does not comply with those requirements, that letter of credit will be cashed, and the city will do that work, or hire contractors to do that work.
But the analogy is grading and minor stuff...
It is very minor things, but we do have a letter of credit for thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
We have a call for question for the vote. It's been moved and second that we approve the application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, being none, the application stands approved.
Thank you very much. And let me just say, I don't know where Mr. Pertle got his information, but I owned a vacant piece of property at Fairmont and McCann, and I sold it. After I sold it, I can't be responsible for what happens.
Well, Mr. Henson, let me suggest that you try to get with Mr. Shirley, and whatever the outstanding details are, work with him to get yourself cleared out of it, okay? If you would, I think things will be...
Yes, sir.
...a whole lot better.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Could I be told who made the motion?
Don.
Thank you. That's you.
Okay. All right. Next, next item, please.
Okay. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD sixteen dash thirteen filed by Longview Union Plaza LP requesting to rezone lots one, two, and three, Block One of Union Plaza subdivision from Plan Development General Retail to Plan Development General Retail for a storage building and covered parking area located at twelve oh one Northwest Loop, two eighty-one, Suite two hundred.
Okay. Is applicant on this application present? If so, please come, give us your name, address, and tell us about the application.
Yes, sir. My name's Joe Hart with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated here in Longview, twelve oh one Northwest Loop, two eighty-one. This, this project is to amend an existing plan development to allow a construction of a, of a warehouse that's basically going to be a climate control for our, our files, Johnson &amp; Pace's files, and our server room for our computers. And then the other, the larger areas, it just, we're just, it's just a covered parking area. It's already paved in concrete. We're just going to cover it to, and fence it all in for our survey vehicles and survey equipment and, you know, other four-wheelers and ATVs and stuff that we use for the business. And that's, that's the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any, any additional paving planned besides the immediate area where you're having the storage building and the covered parking?
There's a, the shaded area is the limits of the building, and then there's an apron, a concrete apron, I think maybe ten or fifteen feet, maybe ten feet apron, that connects the face of the building to the existing concrete parking lot. And then over on the left side or to the west is, is a driveway that will essentially an apron to allow to get behind, you know, to pull in, to drive in behind the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Being none at this time, we'll hear from staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Plan Development General Retail, PD sixteen, to Plan Development General Retail to allow for the construction of a storage building, as Mr. Hart had stated, for their files and server processing room and, and to allow for covered parking. The proposed site plan shows two structures, both being one-story, with the storage building being approximately three thousand two hundred square feet, and the covered parking structure with, which approximately is five thousand seven hundred square feet. Currently, Johnson &amp; Pace's office, offices are located on this property with a few other offices. They're proposing this storage building for their use. It is not mini warehouse or storage facility. I think a few people got, a few people misunderstood our notification, so just to clarify that. The site already contains a hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces, which exceeds our required parking requirement. Through the development process, which they have already begun the development process, this project will be required to meet all other City of Longview requirements. Loop two eighty-one is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. They are not proposing any new driveways. They will be using the existing driveway to this site. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for staff? No questions for staff at this time. We will open up a public hearing on PD sixteen dash one-three. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward.
Larry Williamson, eighteen fourteen Northwood Court. I'm not opposed to it. I just haven't lived behind the property as does my neighbor back here. When we first received this in the mail, it just didn't state on here exactly where this was going to be on the plat. I promised another neighbor of mine who couldn't be here tonight, I would come just to make sure. I've since found out that it looks like it's going to be nowhere near the property line. That's all I want to know. If somebody just draw it on here for me, that'd be good enough. Yeah, okay. Here's, okay, let me show you one of my... I love what we're doing. I love what we're doing. You can see this right? Are you getting it? He gave me the answer I'm looking for. Appreciate it.
All right, sir. We got you your answer, and, okay. Anyone else? Okay. There being no one else present speaking in opposition to this application, the public hearing is now closed. Discussion? Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve PD sixteen dash one-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. PD sixteen dash one-three is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is discussion item.
I had two more here. I didn't know that they had been pulled. Okay. I had two more items that had been mailed to me, and I didn't realize they had been All right. Our discussion item, several meetings or so ago, we had some discussion about the notification parameters on zoning requests and changes. So the staff did a little bit of research by checking in with, checking on other cities, hopefully close to our size, to get us information on what they do and how they do it and what they charge for it, and that should have been mailed out in everyone's pack. As you can see, the fees associated are from a little to a whole lot, and they're doing a lot of different things, but looks like more towns in our size are trying to stay on the lower end of not having fees and so forth, so. Anyway, I hope that provides information. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Okay.
I don't ever want to, when this came about, the notification process over time, in my short time on the board, it's been in question. I, a few people that have come here, are we getting the communications of these events, rezones? Are the people that affected getting notified properly? I know that we mailed, and so I think it became one of the things that I had asked was, I mean, people look at your mail every day, or you look for the couple envelopes and throw it away. We don't want to deter any builder from coming to Longview, Texas. We want this to be a positive experience. But I got to throw in what Larry just said a moment ago. Communication is key to success. He was concerned. He came. A lot of people don't come. Could we do a better job on our notifications to the affected people? I don't know, because I don't get the notifications, so I'm going to ask you a favor. Is there any way we could put the commission on those notifications so we could just look at those? I know it's a simple piece of paper that we mail out, but Larry's, I've known him a while. Like he said, all I needed was somebody to show me where the building was, and he left in a few seconds.
Yeah.
I don't know where, I just, I want to make this friendly for the people that are being affected, but I want it to be positive for the developers. And if I come across wrong or right, I just feel like we need to communicate. My favorite saying is, "Communication is the key to success." But Larry had some communication issues. We resolved them. Thankfully, I'm glad he came tonight.
Yeah. And we do, we, we provide our contact information on those notification, notification letters. We provide our address, our phone number, our email address. You know, we, we do provide as mu, we try to provide as much information as we can on those notification requests. However, unfortunately, we, we don't get that many calls. Sometimes they do show up at the meetings, and they're welcome to show up to those meetings, but we do try to provide as much information as possible on those notification letters.
I think how this came up was Mr. Carpenter had asked about the signs, and after looking at some of these sign options, I will just say, I thought the one from the city around Rock looked very good to me. It's on page thirteen. City around Rock, notice a public hearing regarding this property. And I think it's real clear, the size is not too big, being two feet by three feet. I mean, if we are going to want to increase communication, the thing that's not being done here, that's being done other places successfully, is the use of a sign. Our fees are right in line. I wouldn't want to go up on fees, but it would be incumbent upon the developer, I suppose, as it is in several of these other locations, to put up the sign. So I, I thought probably what we'd be talking about tonight would be signage.
Well, that's right, commission. The original discussion was the sign, but more, moreover, the distance. I was privy to a, to a situation in our town that happened prior to coming on to, to this commission, and the two-hundred-foot rule worked all the way till they got to the second public hearing, and people at three-hundred feet stayed such an uproar that the project died. And so my question to you and to the staff was, in the original concept, was do we need to notify a larger radius so that we don't have projects that get all the way to the second public hearing before they just...
Kind of had them both match.
Yes. And then the sign issue came up because I was in Tyler and visiting and looking around, and they, they signed. So, and then the discussion came up on, there's not city budget money to do signs. That can be well said and done, but those polycore signs are not exorbitant, probably something less than fifteen bucks a piece, like the round rock sign, and they're disposable, so.
Well, I think when we look at the distance, there are a number of them that are two-hundred feet, just like we are, and there's...
Eleven of them that are two-hundred feet, one of them is two-twenty-five, and three that are three-hundred.
Right. So... So, there's, you know, there's, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of variety there, I guess, best way I'd put it. And I guess the question would be one of, where do you stop, and where do you start, and why two-fifty versus two-hundred, or why three-hundred versus two-hundred?
Angela, is it a state?
State law requires two-hundred feet. And also...
Since there were so many of them at two-hundred, that's what I thought it was.
Yes. State law requires two-hundred feet, and then also if a petition is submitted, um, then, and anybody can submit a petition, but the only ones that count first, supermajority at city council, for a supermajority to approve an item, um, is the two-hundred feet. So if you get a petition, and twenty percent of the landowners within, uh, the two-hundred-foot buffer, they're the only ones that really truly count in the petition, as far as requiring a supermajority vote to approve an item at council. So if you get a petition, it's got a thousand signatures, but yet nobody within two-hundred feet, it can still just require a simple majority to approve an item.
So extending that wouldn't help any? It's gonna be two-hundred.
The only thing it would do is, is to notify people, but, um, the only truly, when it comes to a petition, um, is the two-hundred-foot buffer.
I wish I never got a cheap sign cost, because the usual stick sign idea in certain instances would just stop all this. But I agree, I don't want the developer to ever feel like we're wanting him not to come here. We've had that image. We have fought, and our city has done a good job in bringing some new businesses and new, that's new property taxes, that's new nice things, but, uh, I don't know that it, like I said, if we, as long as we're doing our job and, and, and communicating, uh, maybe it's just something we need to consider and bring back to a work session one day and just have a further discussion, if there is people not settled with this, uh, idea.
Well, and...
Back, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
Back to the city, the city of Round Rock, they have a signage fee of twenty bucks, so I figure their sign must be twenty bucks, and, um, I, I suppose they provide the signs to the people.
I think they provide it, yeah, template, and, and, um, as far as, uh, what Mr. Ronnie Rice was saying, um, we are going through the UDC process. That will start up next year. The UDC process is the Unified Development Code. Um, the city is, uh, is under negotiations with a consultant to look at, um, all of our development codes, put them all under one umbrella, um, and kind of look at updating our code, streamlining processes. And I think this discussion right here is a good chance, this is something we can bring up to the consultants. It, I think it's a good chance, you know, it's a good way to get the public's input on this, on this very, this item we're discussing right now, um, because there will be public involvement, and there will be public meetings, and I think this is a discussion, you know, that we could entertain at, you know, at that time during the Unified Development Code, um, the drafting of it.
Is the, is the UDC gonna also get our fees in line with other...
That is one thing we've talked about. Yes, sir.
It's a positive move to me, it seems to me. And once you get your signs done, then you can reuse the signs, 'cause it's not, it's not, you know, location-specific.
On the Round Rock one, yes, sir. That's correct.
This says, "Call Angela."
That's it.
Yeah.
Of course, in Round Rock, we see here that the city puts up the sign and takes down the sign. But the city also has seven hundred and fifty-dollar, 'cause, I mean, it takes somebody to go out there and do it.
Yes, sir.
So, I think perhaps maybe it might be a good idea for us to take a look at this, as Angela is saying, uh, when we can weigh it in relation to everything.
Absolutely.
Because somebody will have to pay for the truck and the gas and everything to get it done, so I think weighing it in relation to all those, uh, and would be a good idea if everybody's agreeable to that. This is just a discussion, so we will just ask staff to make sure that that item is included.
Yes, sir. We will.
Okay.
Once again, communication is key to...
Communicate.
So, if we don't talk about it, we don't have...
I have a question about that. The UDC, is that what we're calling it?
Yes, I am.
When that occurs, who predominantly attends those public hearings? Is it primarily developers and individuals from that type of business, or do, how much, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how weighted the feedback is.
I don't think we've really, I don't think we've gone that far into it yet, um, and, you know, we've not even, I mean, we have selected a consultant, but we haven't even signed a contract with them yet. Um, I'm not sure if we're going to have a task force, but we're definitely going to, going to have some public meetings, like the, like the comprehensive plan, where we had some public meetings where citizens had their input, um, with charrettes and, um, videos and pictures and things like that. We will definitely have, um, hopefully, um, a couple meetings like that.
So a good mix.
Yes, ma'am. We hope.
That's important.
Mm-hmm.
Staff update?
Um, all items at city council were approved.
Okay. Great. Citizen comments? There being none, this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is now adjourned. Thank you all.